Okay.
Hey, Jay.
There was a motion made by Jim Johnson and by Jim Jones to adjourn executive session.
Okay. I'm just gonna record on the ratio LLC conditional use permit and just make a statement that the Board of Adjustment findings from November 5th of 2019, there was four findings for them to provide proof of water rights and a general permit from the D E N R, a road hall agreement with Han County, and also a tree belt buffer zone plan, and we have received all four of those permits.
So they're in compliance with?
They are in compliance with their conditional use permit.
Okay. Thanks, Jamie.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Jamie.
Have a wonderful day.
You too.
I'll give you free time, I'll come hold that tape measure for you.
I'm ready.
This number. You use my phone?
Either way. Shane's gonna be on, uh...
Hello.
Hey, Shane.
Hey.
You are live on speakerphone here in the room.
Ten-four.
So, anyway, some, you have some requests here you'd like to go over?
Yeah, uh, let me pull them up again, I had them up once. I would like to request to hire Sandy Setling to part-time for twenty hours a week to help out while Chelsea's gone. I know we talked about it earlier, I don't remember if we... You guys made a motion and approved it.
I remember talking about it.
It isn't gonna hurt anything.
Yeah.
Just by consensus.
Right.
I'm okay.
I'm okay with that.
I'm bad.
Yeah, we have consensus to do that.
Okay, um, also, I have, uh, I'd like to, instead of hiring a separate part-time, uh, office manager or clerk, I'd like to just extend Lisa Holmes' hours to where she could do, put twenty hours in at the desk, and then she, and without any benefits, she, while Chelsea's gone, do that up to forty hours, but without benefits.
Doug, would that be in violation of our employment?
No, the only, the only limitation's gonna be on her retirement, because...
Right.
She can only go, like, twelve-hundred-and-fifty hours in a year without having retirement. So, I mean, you might have to trim her way back in the future to stay below that threshold.
Okay, so I can, so I can have her working extra hours now and then not working later on in the year?
I believe so, but I'll, I'll ask him just to make sure.
Okay, I wasn't sure how he could do that.
Because, like, for example, like, teachers, they can only, they can return to work after their buffer time, but they can only put in so many hours, and they applied that rule to new hires as well. So I'll just double-check and make sure.
Do we need to also inquire about whether or not this would qualify her for insurance that she might?
If she does the waiver.
Okay.
It won't be a problem. Is she willing to do that, right, Shane?
Yeah.
It was by the waiver time, because it's not over forty.
Right.
Okay, even though it's over whatever she was working before.
Right.
Not overtime, okay.
Yeah, basically, she's becoming a water-branded summer seasonal employee.
Right.
Is that a consensus?
Do you wanna do that consensus on, on?
Because you're not changing her pay.
On the fact that she, you want to move the, uh, salary?
Um, I don't think within this month before the next meeting's gonna have a big-up impact to hurt anything, so if it doesn't work, we can address it for later.
Okay.
If you need consensus.
Yes, consensus, so everyone will agree with that, yes. Okay.
Okay, um, I would like to request purchase for our canine. Uh, the canine is seventy-five-hundred dollars. I have six thousand budgeted for it in my budget. It was a little bit higher than I expected. Like to request that.
Where would we get the other fifteen-hundred?
You guys.
Huh?
Well, if it comes up short at the end of the year, you have to cover it.
Wouldn't we have to cover it way before that?
And this dog's gonna be trained to do?
Drugs, drug detection.
Who's gonna handle the dog?
Brandon Fisher.
Do we have any long-term commitment from Randy if we do this?
Uh, say that again?
Do we have any long-term commitment from Randy if we do this?
Brandon.
Brandon.
Brandon, I'm sorry.
Brandon, he bought a, well, he bought a house in town.
Right down from me, same street.
Well, what you do, drug dog, you know, it's a long-term commitment, it isn't a short commitment, that, that's my only concern.
Correct, no, you're right, and I, Brandon's committed to it, um, like I said, he bought a house in town. I guess the biggest commitment is we could request right now, I guess.
Does the drug dog go with the officer with whom it is mated or matched?
Yeah, well, they, that's ideally, yes, um, if, when you enter the canine program, you have an officer just assigned to it, and ideally, they stay together throughout that dog's career. Um, obviously, there are situations that do occur where, where that doesn't happen, and, and, uh, drug dogs are reassigned to new handlers.
So it's likely that if Brandon decided to pull off stakes, we'd lose Brandon and his dog, huh?
Say that again, Jim, sorry.
If Brandon were to leave, we'd lose not only Brandon, but the dog too, in our investment.
No, no, that's what I mean, if, if something were to happen like Brandon did to you, or whatever, no, we would just, we would have to reassign it to another handler.
And then he'd have to be retrained with the dog, right?
Right, right.
Okay.
It is possible to, they don't like to do that, of course, but it is possible to reassign a dog, a new handler.
Is that appropriate?
Yes.
I know, so what, how much, uh, um, how much cost would this be? I mean, you've got the cost of buying the dog or getting the dog, but then there's gonna be, going to be taking care of the dog. So food and vet and all that.
Correct.
What's that gonna cost us?
Well, that was budgeted originally by Doug for six thousand a year, or a thousand a year, I believe, is what he had down for it. So, we'd look at probably around a thousand dollars a year.
So that was original supplies, it was a thousand?
Right.
We had some businesses that had agreed to pay some of those, but that was four or five years ago.
It still seems like a pittance to me, how good we could get out.
As far as training goes, I mean, you just schedule it out, like when Jordan Anderson was here, if he had to go somewhere, we'd just schedule it out. So really, the only thing you're losing is the man behind the dog. So this dog will be trained, basically, marijuana, for all intents and purposes, is gonna become legal in this state, so...
It, it won't be trained on marijuana.
Right, it'll be trained on the other, the other drugs.
Yep.
I know on several instances, the handler, in these cases, had a chance for a buyout of the dog, to take the dog with him. In a lot of cases I've heard of, you know, rather than trying to switch the dog to a new handler, the guy that's been handling it, if he moved, left, he'd buy the dog out and take it with him. Rather try to retrain him to another person, because all dogs have different personalities. Some of them you can hand off, some of them, they, they don't hand off.
Well, like I said, they would, they would, they would have to be trained with them, of course, but, um, I'm not looking at Brandon going anywhere, and he's not either, he's pretty excited about doing this, so I don't see that as being an issue, but...
Well, that's a plus, that you have good confidence in that, you know? Your recommendations are gonna be a big part of our decision.
On the liability side, what is there for the county? We gonna be liable for, I mean, does this open us up to liability? Or is there insurance we can get, or?
We already have.
We already have.
Get it.
Okay.
Right, and the li- in liability, as far as, uh, dog biting somebody, that we're not getting a dog that bites. We're getting a drug dog, not a, not a pursuit dog.
So you're just gonna give a dog, basically, that'll hit on the drug, and that's, and that's what it's gonna do?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm moving to approve it.
We have a motion to approve?
I'll second. Six thousand, six thousand was already approved.
Yeah.
We're talking about fifteen-hundred dollars more.
Right.
I will second that motion.
What about the training costs and absentee costs?
The dog is... I mean, the, I mean, the cost.
You got trade guidance.
I mean, the cost of the dog is the minor one. It's, there's gonna be a lot more that goes with it, we just, I just want that upfront, that there's gonna be costs involved with this.
I will say, though, the deterrent within the county of us having a dog here is a big cost.
I think it's an absolutely justifiable investment, it's all life, it can't carry us.
Sure.
Shane, what's the timeframe on that?
Uh, we're looking at getting the dog in February, and then it'll probably go to camp in March.
Okay, so the agreement that you had in your email?
Yeah.
Does that need to be executed today?
Yeah.
Or can it be executed in the next couple of weeks?
No, it can be executed in the next, next week, or so I can send that off.
Do, has Elton looked at it?
No.
Okay, do you go into? Probably would be a good idea. Yeah, shoot it, shoot it to him.
And I'm not saying no, but the, uh, this is the same company that the troopers get their dogs through. And everything, it's what South Dakota gets their canine service, this one, so it's not, I'm not just going through some, some fly-by-night kennel.
Shane, how old would the dog be?
Hi.
How old would this dog be?
Oh, it'll be, it's born, or it'll probably be six months, we get it maybe a little older.
Do we know what make and model at this point, or not?
No, no, they're gonna, they're gonna pick one out that, uh, this lady who breeds them and buys them, she goes over to, to Europe and, and picks them out, buys them, and brings them back. So she picks out each one according to, you know, newer handlers compared to veteran handlers and, and things like that.
So if I understand the agreement, that's for the purchase of the dog and then the initial training?
Well, the, the training is through the state, the training we don't pay for.
Okay, so this is just for the, the handler itself?
Just the dog, yep.
Okay, and then somebody has to go get it?
No, don't, the only thing we'll have to do is drive to Kansas to pick it up. And she buys them in Europe and brings them back, and then we just have to run to Kansas to get them. Or if, or if somebody from this area is getting a dog, they can pick it up too.
So I would suggest that you do a motion that wants Elton gives it a great life, which...
Yeah, so we don't have to wait for him on, okay, that's my question.
Yeah, I would, it would be nice to send it, can you send it, do you have that?
Yeah.
Do you have it, or, can you send it down for review, please?
Pending Elton's approval, then I would move.
Do we ensure this dog for health and well-being, or?
So it's taken care of.
I mean, you're back over in the driveway with your dog, you're dead dog.
We could probably have that, I'm sure that it's available, but we could sure try.
Oh, that's pretty good.
I mean, that's, yeah, that's an asset, so...
Yeah, makes sense.
You step out on the highway and a car goes by and you know how we use it, gets the dog.
Right.
Right.
That happens to our own dogs. Otherwise, I'm fine.
Okay, motion and second. Any other discussion? Hearing those, all of them in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries.
I hope we don't have to raise him and sell him to surplus.
Anything else you have?
Yes, um, I would like to approve the, uh, Deputy Fisher received his seventy-five cent raise for his eighteen months according to the wage scale, and Deputy's waiver received his seventy-five cent raise for the one year on February 2nd, according to the wage scale.
I'm assuming you want that retroactive back to the first of the year, right?
Right, for, for issues, yeah.
If it's already on the wage scale, we don't have to do anything other than consent to it, right?
You need to change somebody's wage in your motion. I'll make that a motion.
A second. I'm both in, we do.
Both. To approve the request.
Okay. Second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries.
And it was retroactive, correct?
Yeah.
Good, because we don't like separated timesheets.
So it's December 1st?
Is it December 1st or January 1st?
Because he was hired middle of December, so his anniversary goes to the evening of November.
Yep.
So January 1st?
Yep.
One's eighteen months and one's one year.
All right, that's all I got.
Fisher was eighteen months, Weber was one year.
Right.
Anything else for Shane, anyone?
No.
Thanks, Shane.
Thank you, Shane.
Should've wished you better to get over to the C O B.
It sounded like that.
Appreciate his help, shouldn't have to work on yourself.
You know, if the dog is supposed to not physically interact with the public, isn't designed to be a fighting dog, or a defensive dog, or, or the officer, or any of those kind of things, it doesn't seem to me like the breed that they choose is all that important.
Oh, there's some of them are awesome, though.
Yeah, I'm sure there are that can smell better.
Will, would you come up, please?
My wife's uncle happened, he was thirty years canine out there, and he always had a Labrador.
Did he?
He was fucking psycho, he talked about unmarriedly. Dragged me down the sidewalk, dog, he wasn't mean, just hired a psycho, but he couldn't even lose.
He knows his eyes.
He couldn't even lose on a car, I mean, he never part of that club, you know? Yeah, trouble catching, then get him back.
So you got the generator repaired?
Yes, sir, the generator is up and running. Uh, we got, um, Interstate Power Systems out here to repair it, the bill on that was twelve-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and three cents. What I'm passing around to you now is a, um, proposal by Interstate Power Systems to, uh, service the, uh, the generator at a cost of nine-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars per year. Uh, they did include that if we wanted a special call-out, that they would charge us twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars. I don't imagine we'd ever need a special call-out for a service. If this was any other piece of equipment, I wouldn't be concerned with this. But talking with Arlen, uh, the, uh, the Sheriff's Department's communication system is dependent upon the building having electricity. This last, uh, over the last couple of months, we've had some problems with the generator, we had to get ironed out. And it turns out, the generator's ten years old, and it turns out that what had to happen was, was that the, uh, the block heater needed to be replaced and the, uh, battery charger needed to be replaced.
For each call-out, or twelve-fifty would cover us for as many call-outs as there are in a year?
Well, no, what I, what this is, is nine-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars buys us these, uh, things and these bullet points. If for some reason we wanted them to come out there when it wasn't convenient for them, they would charge us that same price for twelve-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Uh, frankly, I talked with Gary, the mechanic over at the, uh, at the, um, Highway Department about this. And a sen- and, like I said, essentially, he and I, between us, can do everything that's needed for the, uh, check for maintaining it and making repairs. But what we're really purchasing here are the last three items on this, and especially the last two. I've maintained the, I've maintained, I've changed the filters, changed the fluids, uh, except I haven't had to do the, uh, the, uh, the coolant yet, and I would have had to this year, but they've essentially done it with this repair. But what we're getting, the electrical inspection and gensets and A T S and running test generators. That way, we can be reasonably sure that the generator is gonna come on when the power fails. And if it doesn't come on, they've essentially told me that if, we, that we have a service contract with them, they put us at the top of the list to get out here. This last time when I called them, uh, they were a week and a half getting out here, and they charged us off the credit card, wasn't taking invoice, because they said, "We don't have a contract with you." And I said, "That's fine, just come out here and fix it when you can." Right now, the generator works, um, the repairs have been done, we've done a load test on it. I've had the, um, before this happened, I had the, um, the camp, the, uh, hot, the city come over, the city, uh, electric department come over and manually turned the power off, and the thing came on. So, uh, one time this, back in the fall, the power went off and the generator didn't come on, and I had to go out there and manually start it. But now, all that seems to be worked out. My recommendation is to get these last three items and, um, done on a regular basis and to be sure that we got a generator that works, especially because of the Sheriff's Department, that we, uh, pay the, uh, nine-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars and get them to service it. Then entry July or so, they'll be out here and verifying this.
How old is it?
It's ten years old. I was thinking it was a little younger, I think, was thinking initially it was a little younger than that, but I went back and checked the paperwork with them, and it, it was installed in 2012.
I suppose the, the, how long it uses, it gets, has a lot to do with its expected lifetime.
Yes.
Service. Uh, how much service in terms of years could we expect out of it if we're not using it in the future any more than we used it in the past?
I, I really not, really couldn't answer that question. My expectation is, is that it will last for, it will last for another couple of decades, maybe. I know of a generator up in, uh, North Dakota that was army surplus, that has been maintained regularly, that literally dates back to the Second World War, so, uh, of course, this is a little bit more sophisticated system. You know, I think part of this is, is that if we are maintaining it to the level that they describe here, especially, especially these last three items, these last three items really, well, actually, the last two items concern the generator itself. And as Gary told me, he said, "I can do anything with that engine out there, I can fix it." But when it comes to turn, comes to testing the generator, that acts, that the, uh, the engine turns, produce the electricity, I don't have, he says, "I don't have a clue." That's what we're purchasing here.
We've had this discussion before, and that's why we kinda decided we're gonna, like, the implement dealers or whoever. I can't even remember, I think it was like five hundred bucks that came out and serviced it for. I, do you know the last time that?
Well, see, that's just...
What did they charge?
We're talking, they're gonna charge us less, but...
No, but I understand you're asking about the two or three items pertaining to the performance of the generator, not to maintenance. That's what you're talking about.
Yes.
So, what's the dollar difference between having that come or having this not?
Well, there's really, their attitude is, is they wanna do the whole thing. They, they, but they, they, they won't divide it, my understanding is they won't divide it up. I mean, what we get, we can get John Deere to come and deal with it, uh, and I really don't know, I really don't know the price on that.
That's what we've been doing in the past, so we should've got...
It started out...
We should've got, you know, some part of it.
And then Alex Rober was the one that changed it, he was changing the oil himself, but then he hired Peter to do it, and then...
Since I've been here, I've been doing it. And we've been, and, uh, if there was any, and the idea was that there was any repair to be done, let the Highway Department do it. And frankly, if this was any other piece of equipment, I'd say it was a lot more, just, if, when it breaks down, just, we'd fix it. But with the, the hot, the, the Sheriff's Department depending upon the electricity being on, so that they could, what's that?
All of our data depends on that thing.
And, yeah.
So, so they're gonna test run this thing once a year?
Yes, sir. And if there's...
They're gonna, they're gonna come out and make sure all, every, all these bullet points on here work. Basically, the air filter, oil filters and all that over there, that's incidental. It's when you get over to the other side, when they start checking, inspecting the, the... The performance of it, that's, and I don't think you're gonna get that through John Deere.
That wasn't my point, but, my point was how many dollars difference are we talking here?
We're talking...
Couple hundred bucks.
We're only talking, we're only, we're only talking, oh, I, I'm with you, I mean, my guess is, my guess is that their chart, their price is gonna be somewhere from five and six hundred dollars. Uh, so, and frankly, if that was all that we, all that was involved here, I just, it'd be less than that, I'd just do it myself. But, uh, if you're looking at it that way, if we have it professionally done, which really we ought to, we're probably between, uh, the cost of somebody local doing it and these guys doing it, we're probably talking about three to four hundred dollars difference at the max. And, go ahead, sir.
Excuse me, Will, my question is, if they're gonna come out and do this thing and test run it once a year, and one month before that, uh, annual inspection, it needs to start up and run and doesn't, what are we getting for this money?
It almost starts every week.
It does.
Yeah, so now, one of the things that I, I, every week, I'm out there checking the thing, because Monday morning at about, now, it's about, look, about five minutes before eight, the thing turns on and runs for approximately ten minutes. And every Monday, I'm out there checking it, and it's, they're like, savings time, it'll change to nine o'clock, but it just, it keeps cycling through.
It doesn't transfer during that time, does it?
No, it does not.
No, they'd always told us that we should do two runs with it under load.
Twice a year.
And we've done it.
One time.
And we've done that twice this last year, and we'll do it again, we'll do it again when they're here. And then, with that said, I will do it sometime again this next year too, after they do it. One of the things, when they come out here and do it, I'm gonna stand there with them instead of on the phone, is to show me how to do it, so I know how to do it exactly. Now, the hard test that we did on it this last year was have the hot, the, I keep wanting to say the Highway Department, the city's electrical department come over here, turn the power off. So there wasn't, it wasn't a matter of going downstairs, and we did a tested it downstairs, did the transfer test downstairs. But I wanted to be sure, they came over with their long pole, turned the switch, and, uh, it came on immediately. And Doug didn't even, he was up here watching the, uh, the computer screens, and nothing happened, there was no interruption. So right now, we got it, it's going good, I'm just, it's working, I think we can get years of service out of this thing. We just need to, we just need to be sure.
We just need to show us, um, the hospital's generator.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
By the school.
I think Butler has a contractor that will provide it, it's a different manufacturer, but...
These are the guys that installed the thing and sold it.
Go ahead, Jim.
So, uh, is this one-year contract?
Yes, sir.
So you renew it annually?
Yes, sir.
So you bring it back annually, or it just automatically?
Well, we could, you know, however the gentleman wanna handle it, but, uh, we can, uh, we have the same situation with the, uh, the boiler. I feel comfortable just coming back with you and talking with you about it every year, so it's come up, let's renew it. You know, and, uh, April is gonna come up with G and R control about the ser- their, uh, yearly servicing of the, uh, the boilers downstairs, so...
So you have room in your budget, it was far more than that?
Yes, sir, I mean, that's part of the, the servicing thing, so...
I'll move to the one-year.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second, any other discussion? All of them in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign.
Did, uh, something that, did you talk with them about the elevator state? Would you like me to bring that up now? Okay, the, uh, a couple of things going on, one is the, uh, Schumacher is, uh, coming up with a scope of work for the, uh, that they're gonna give to Harris, Pearson Harris, Randy Hoshad. And, uh, from that scope of work, he's gonna develop a spec, and he's a specification for replacement elevator. And he's on, and Randy is also in communication with Otis, and they're gonna be, uh, and they're gonna provide him with the information as well. So far, the only people that have come out, Schumacher has come out with their, uh, their general contractor and their electrical contractor inspected the thing, and sometime this month, I expect to get a report from them that, uh... that will be a start on the scope of work that Randy could use for that specification that we would use to put a bid out eventually. I'll just give you background on what's going on with that. This last month, I've had several people stop me and ask me if they can use the elevator. Yesterday, over at Ace, somebody asked me, can my wife, my wife can't walk up the stairs. Can she use the elevator? Is the elevator broke? Is the elevator fixed yet, is what he asked me. I reassured him he could come and do that. But what I would recommend, I've written something up here that I'll read to you, that I think we should give to the newspaper about this, and it reads as follows. "The elevator in the courthouse is safe and can be used by the public. One time in twenty twenty-one, the elevator controls failed to stop the car at the desired floor, and the car went to the attic. A county employee opened the door for the man in the elevator, and the elevator company was called to make repairs. The elevator is inspected every quarter and is tested every year by Schumacher Elevator Company. Because of the incident described above, we ask that anyone wishing to use the elevator, call the office on the second or third floor and have a county employee operate the elevator for them. Signs with the office numbers are posted on the elevator door. The elevator, uh, the elevator is ninety-six years old, and parts are no longer available. Because of this, the county is actively looking at options for replacing the courthouse elevator." We just had a lot of people, just, they got, people apparently are confused. If they think they can't come down here and use the elevator.
I think we should tell them that the commission is in a process of replacing it.
Okay.
Looking at options, we're gonna do it.
Okay.
Because we've already agreed to it.
Is, is in the process.
Of replacing the elevator.
Uh, see, because of this, the, uh, the county commission.
You say the county's gonna replace the elevator.
The county is in, the county is in the process of replacing the courthouse elevator.
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't you think that's more accurate?
We're not in the process of replacing it yet, but we're, we've definitely decided it needs to happen.
We're talking about five years.
I guess that's a process. I mean.
Well, it's gonna be a process no matter. To me, that, to me, that sounds like.
Yeah, so.
To me, that probably sounds like people are gonna think that the elevator is being replaced. So, no, I can't go there and use it, 'cause it's in the process of being replaced, but I don't know.
Well, maybe, well, there is a better way to word that thing. We can read more.
Because, uh, the elevator is ninety-six years old, and parts are no longer available. Because of this, uh, the county is actively looking at options for replacing the courthouse elevator.
Yeah.
We're plan, we're planning to replace it. We're putting money away over here.
Yes.
So, we have a plan in effect.
The options, the options part.
The county will replace. How's that sound?
Okay, what is this? The county will, the county will.
No, it's future.
Will. Replace, what, the, uh, the county will replace the courthouse elevator in the future.
Wow, if it's will, even if you have a future, that'd be redundant.
That's true. We'll, we'll replace the courthouse elevator.
Yeah. We didn't say will.
Well, we don't. Uh, one thing that.
That's pretty committed.
One thing that has come up with the, with Schumacher is, is that they're, all that talk about the hydraulic system is, is, it won't work. They, uh, they, they told me that doing that, they would have to put a, uh, a pipe router in the bottom of the, uh, the elevator shaft and drive in the casing for the, uh, the lift, and that would destroy every wall and pipe in this building. It would be, it would be subjecting the whole building to a earthquake.
Do we, do we want to have a person who wants to use the elevator haul the office?
Well, I'm, most, but, most people are gonna come in and just push the button and get in it. But if somebody is really fearful, that's there. And I've lent it to some people that are really fearful of getting into that elevator.
Oh, okay.
Is there a sign on the door?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The sign's on the door now. So, some people just get in and ignore it, and some people, I don't, I don't know that there are many people that called. I don't know how to talk to the departments and tell them what was going on, and they were okay with being elevator operators when they had to. But, I mean, the point of this is to put something out there so that, um, there aren't, there isn't somebody sitting at home thinking, I can't come down to the register of deeds office because I can't go up in the elevator, which apparently, that one gentleman, his wife was not gonna come because of that.
I like Jim's idea that, you know, call, if there's anything that we can do, we'll come down and do it. Play on bottom floor, you know, if, if you don't want to. Remember, that was your idea.
What was the point of the exercise we engaged in here a month ago where you guys were hauling me up those steps on that?
A, a solution during the time the elevator is being replaced.
Oh. Have our down the road?
I don't think, I don't think their liability insurance did enough.
Well, I think that when, if they come in, it's hard to say how long it's gonna, we're, there's gonna come a point where we do not have the functioning of there. It's not gonna be years, it's probably gonna be a couple of months, because, you know, they, but who knows? That's my guess at it. It may be three or four months, I don't know.
The only thing I can think of where somebody actually would have to be on the third floor, can't say second, but third, would be, uh, for purposes of appearing at a trial or some judicial, uh, function. But as Doug knows, the judges have been very flexible in that regard. I mean, he's held court out there in the parking lot.
We've got an assembly room downstairs, and for, if worse comes to worse, we could. We could do court in the assembly room for two or three months while they're doing it. The only time it would probably really be an issue is if there's a jury trial, and those are very rare. I think those are just the least of our problem. We can, we can make that work if we have, at some point, we're gonna have to make that work. But it's, I don't think it's gonna be that big of a hardship. But just the fact that it's only temporary will be, will be fine.
Yes.
I think Jim answered the question here a couple of months ago, when he said, if you call one of them numbers, there's one of you guys in these offices up here, they won't go downstairs. Help that person if they don't want to. There isn't anybody here that they can go down.
No, no.
It's not.
I'll be right back with your license.
This is, this is for, this is for the guy that's just adamant about getting in the elevator and going up and.
But we just need to make it clear that they don't have to do that if they want to.
We will service them on the floor, big, or ground level floor if we need them.
Right.
It don't matter.
Listen, I, I have it. Because of this described above, we're asking that anyone wishing to use the elevator call, change that to something like, uh, if anyone just, if anyone.
Anyone concerned about.
Anyone concerned about using.
Good.
There, there will be.
He's willing to call.
Willing to write in the edit with you.
Anyone.
Take the death right to.
That's right.
So, anyone concerned about using the elevator can call the office on the second or third floor, and county employee. Change that from have to, so, if you wish, anyone concerned.
Call me.
Okay, I will, and with your permission, I will, uh, type this up and give it to Jim. And, uh.
Okay, thanks, Will.
Thank you.
Any other questions? John?
Yep.
Did you have something we'd like to discuss here over the board?
Yes. I did, I talked to Jim about this a little while ago. It's really easy.
They get a blood today?
Yes.
Where?
With the church service. Here's a copy for each of you. You can already have a copy.
Get a mail, be direct to them.
So. I talked, came talking to you guys like early last year about.
Excuse me, Jeff, uh, sorry for the interruption. On this, would I, can I get, uh, the contract to get, uh, the chairman to sign that? I guess that's what will be decided, but. And how are you?
Is it different though?
No, it's the same, actually, it's the same one you have here.
Okay. So, I don't know, what was it? I think spring high street?
Yeah.
I think I came talking to you guys about purchasing or obtaining a landfill. Um, you guys, we had kind of somewhat agreed to it, set it up, and it came down that they weren't going to look at doing it, so too small a community. Well, that wasn't a, a good answer for me, that it sat well with me. So, the other day, 'cause they're building a new range, and they're water town, Sioux Falls, Rapid. Uh, if you guys watched the news, you guys seen the one that they're talking about out of weed alley. Climate issue, not okay with it or whatever. But anyways, um, so, we had a meeting with everybody in wildlife staff, and the director of wildlife was on there, just Tom Perschmann. He, he is directly under Secretary Roblin. And I sent a message on there, and I said, why wasn't it, I was told that it was too small to matter. I don't know if we're building ranges everywhere, and he was like, talk to me afterwards. That was, that was reply I got back. So, it actually never made it up to him. So, a week ago, Corey and I sat, talked with him. He put me in touch with, uh, individual that does all of our grants and all that. So, possibly looking at moving forward with this again. Okay? Now, were, were all of you guys okay with looking at building this? I guess what's the other thing?
Well, it's within three miles of Miller, which means that our zoning laws wouldn't cover this. So, the zoning, uh, regulations for the city of Miller would be relevant here.
They waived theirs.
Did they, they waived them? Okay, I don't think we have.
Two, three years ago.
It's kind of the thing you asked before.
Right, yeah. They waived it.
Okay, I don't think we have to do anything in terms of zoning then, 'cause we gave it to them.
Okay.
So, you're talking about whether or not we would sell it to you?
Well, like, yeah, if you guys are interested in selling it, if there's interest in us looking, moving forward with this, guys, but if, if it's not gonna happen, I don't wanna invest more time in that type of deal.
Does, what does our surrounding counties have for a gun range? Where is the nearest gun range?
So, Hyland has a private use one. You have to be a member of the club to use it.
I don't count, so. Now, where can the public go for a gun?
Here. Here.
Is here a deal kinda good in?
Nope. Got a, like, Isaac Walt League has one. I think you gotta be a member of Isaac Walt League, and I think the Sportsman's Club over there has one, but what's it mean? You have to be a member of the Sportsman.
Also, that's then all along.
There's nice assets that are involved.
Here. Yep.
To clarify too, Jim, when you say how many counties have a gun range? If we sell this, I, I talked to John before lunch today. If we sell this to the game fishing parks, it is not the county's gun range, it's.
Yeah, I misspoke there, I shouldn't. Where is there a gun range in this area? You know, is there any, you know?
Uh, here's the nearest one I know of.
I look at it as an asset to the community. I agree. If we add one here for not only adults, but to you.
So, that's. We'd do it, that's, we'd have no liability whatsoever.
This is, this is a lot more to kill than what we were talking about first, okay?
Is this red zone that's on you're talking about?
So, that was the other thing is, if you guys are wanting to do this, how much are you guys wanting to sell or sell the whole thing except for where the compost pile is? 'Cause I was never, like, you guys always wanted to keep the compost area. You wanna get and talk to you guys last year.
Is it nine acres?
Well, it's ten. The whole thing is ten, right?
Do we know what a success valuation is for whatever that figure is worth?
Zero present.
Because it's owned by the county, so it isn't assessed.
Right.
Do we have any idea what its market value might be? I can't imagine.
Well, I guess it would be twenty-two hundred dollars an acre.
Yeah.
But it was usually.
Yeah, right. Nobody would want it if it's full of garbage.
No. From where I stand, it's, because it's a government entity, they're government entity. Sell for a penny.
Yeah, or a dollar. One dollar.
Our continued liability with this piece of land will always stay there, because it was our landfill. Anything come, no, I think forever, anything that comes to the surface.
They can, they can assume that.
That's really from. Unless there's some exemption hidden in deed, everything is sold, including here. Future liability for anything kind of stuff.
And did, did you?
Unless there's something that's said in the deed from us to them. You know, maybe they won't exempt it under those circumstances, in which case it would be recitations that were made in the deed, but we are.
So, when I talked to Tom, I told him what this land was, and then it was just getting old, and it was sincerely not valuable land really anymore, so we looked at trying to put a range out there.
And John, did you not say that once, once the game and fish owns that property, then it becomes taxable?
Right, yeah, 'cause we pay taxes on our land. Like, I, I lay, all the way up in Lake Louise, we pay taxes just like everybody else. Fish and Wildlife Service does not.
One of the things that John and I talked about was Jeff's concrete rubble pile, and, and then, which then turns into a crushed concrete pile. Do we have another place for him? Or are we just gonna do that on this new ten acres? Or do we have another place? 'Cause that concrete.
Well, that wasn't the question. Are we done with this?
Yeah, it gets, that concrete rubble gets.
I think, I think before we, I mean, the idea, I like, I like the, but I wanna make sure we're done with it.
Yeah.
'Cause if it's gonna put us having to go buy more land to move his rubble site or that concrete crush, uh, then it's not gonna be a transfer for a penny.
Yep.
Well, we had it for thirty-five years. There's not long to fill it up.
But Jeff said we thought maybe one year. Originally, or a few months ago, he said maybe one year, two.
For additional construction.
Capacity.
Capacity. So, construction debris specifically.
Yeah, we could finish filling up, and then, then we'd be done. You know, unless we just needed a parking area, you know, for concrete or whatever.
Right, and actually, if you look where the compost pile is, between the compost and where that two-hundred-yard rifle range is, I mean, even if you guys wanted to go all the way over and keep that, so he could put his concrete, 'cause if you look at the pile of concrete there, which is a circle in the yellow and blue right here, it would fit right here.
Sure would. Is this unused to this point?
Right, there's not, like, there's nothing there.
There's nothing underground.
Yeah, there is.
Oh, yes, sir.
The only part that doesn't have underground is on the west side.
I can hear the driveway.
Kind of the road.
The road.
So, just east of the con- compost pile, that's all built?
That's been used, it's just.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, I think it's just right along, they're, they got a pit open like right here right now. Somewhere in this area.
I guess I'd like to have some public input on this, but I think it's an accident.
And, and this here was just something I kind of just drew together, it's like, it's a vision. I, I, I don't have problems with it.
I just wanna make sure we're done.
Obviously, I had a conversation with Jeff.
Right. Yeah, and that's fine, I just.
I think it should be put out in the public too, so the public knows what's going on.
Those folks I talked to, but I mentioned, we, we had a discussion where a lot of positive feedback on it. Wanting something like that, would love to have something like that.
Yeah, and after I came to talk to you guys, I had a lot of people ask me what was going on with it, like, a lot of people just randomly, and I was like, oh, guy got set up to chain command and got shut down. Well, so, this last go around, I jumped chain command to the top. So, the boss says, it's a good.
John, well, John was on our agenda, so there can be no decisions.
Right.
Let's, uh, let's put this on the agenda for next month, uh, talk to Jeff about, you know, where he thinks we're at, especially with that concrete rubble. Does he have a place where we can go with it? I, I'm, this is my personal opinion, I think this thing is a great idea for the community, but.
What day is commission next week? Or next, the first? The first, okay. Still have it open. We just have to make sure. I agree with you. I bet it's nothing but pluses for us.
Yeah.
If we need to, potential liability.
Utilize the space.
And for one thing, it's going to hopefully eliminate a lot of, uh, kids going out in the country shooting somewhere where they're annoying someone. They've got places they've going.
I don't know, kiders do, but I don't think that's ever gonna stop.
How do you guys police?
I'm sure it's kids.
It's not always kids. I, I promise you that. There was actually.
I, I, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
When you're talking kids, I'm, I'm looking at like thirteen parking lots.
Is this gonna be surrounded by?
Adlocks on them?
How do you?
No, it's open for public use.
Okay, so that means twenty-four hours a day, evening.
So they can go, like, in Mole Bridge, in Mole Bridge, they have it where, and it's something similar to this, I can pull it up. Um, but they just have a lock on it, so they lock it. I think they have like eight o'clock in the night.
I like the idea of game fishing parks, telling nobody that we're kind of building building there. I think that's a great idea. Because where the lawyers buried all that stuff there.
Yeah.
It's, it looks like putting some land in really good use to me.
How many, how many options, how many options does a county have for a used rubble site?
Oh, my.
Especially being able to sell it for any amount of money.
Nobody would want it.
Well, they sell it for the development, but actually, my thing going on here in the county, that's what we're selling.
There isn't even any topsoil. There isn't.
Right, because at one time, like, Todd, like, I know Ty had talked to a couple individuals about possibly using some of the dirt that will be dug out from the new site to make some of the berms, because you just have topsoil in. But I don't know what's going on with that higher stuff.
Yeah, there'll be lots of.
We do obviously, it's a lot of potential, but.
Sounds like you, people are in general favor, I guess.
So if we're, if everybody's.
Investigating.
Like, yeah, this is straw pole or whatever, we'll keep looking into it a little bit more then.
Lots of potential.
Yeah, and like I said, this year was just, it's a visual thing, not a set stone. We can do it however, but.
Right now, there's ever possible, there could be possibility that we're just working together, like, I have an actor or whatever, you can use their backstop for ten years until we need it.
Yeah, and then you're gonna have to worry about cleaning it because then I'll let it in. If you want that dirt bag, you'll have to reclaim it all.
Yeah, I know, I thought about that. That's true.
So, I mean, that's, I'll just throw that up front, like.
You never thought of that either?
Your language plays me.
Yeah. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thanks.
Well.
Send it along.
It's kind of made of our, uh.
They got.
Is there, uh, any need for executive session? Are we already busy?
Five seconds.
Who's there? Jim? Do you have one? Hold it in favor.
Aye.
Dude, that's a record, Josh.
Everybody's in there gossiping.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, shooting places for people to go. You can't believe how many have been put up on the country on ranches right now.
The.
This range. All my neighbors around me got ranches.